Go ahead and call this meeting to order. We have a forum and we have reached the wishing hour. First item that's actually not on the, actually go ahead.
Season's greetings all. I've been alerted prior to the meeting commencing officially that Mr. Koopman will not be able to attend. No, will Mrs. Mitchell. So, I do wish everyone the very best and actually former school committee member Art Warren also wishes everyone the very best. It is my pleasure to introduce the new recording secretary, Amy Sango. She is our leading next door treasurer and I believe the chair wishes you a formal announcement of that appointment.
Yeah, seeing as Ms. Foreman gave her notice and has since left since our last meeting, we have taken steps in, I hereby appoint Amy Sango-Lundas our new recording secretary for the school committee.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard Amy. Moving on, secretary's report. Mr. Yitz.
Chairman, I have reviewed the regular school committee meeting minutes of November fifteenth and I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion made and second by Mr. Finn. Questions, comments, discussion. Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Minutes are approved. Next item, treasurer's department, Ms. Oger.
Yes, the treasurer's report was in your packet. At the end of November, we had seven million four hundred fifty-four thousand one hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Local funds were six million two hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and twelve cents and project funds totaled one million one hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. Please note that at our last meeting, we did vote a transfer of half a million dollars and that is reflected on the report as a transfer. Also, please note that the number of assessments that were due November first have all been paid and the balance of what was due at the end of October is reflected here in that eight hundred and six thousand. Additionally, please note that the warrants, particularly the accounts payable warrant is a little light this time and it's a function of where the warrant spell around the holidays, but you can believe me when I tell you you'll make up for it in December. You've made up for it in December. So, that's how you have it.
Make the motion to accept.
Motion made by Mr. Lavitt, second by Mr. Bartlett. Questions, comments, discussion on the treasurer's report. Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, the report is accepted. Thank you very much Barbara. Next item on the agenda, this superintendent scholar's award, Dr. Chris Patterson.
Mr. Chairman, I'm joined by our assistant superintendent principal, Mr. Steele. It is our distinct pleasure to recognize the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Superintendent Scholar's Award to Alex Goldberg and Zoe Mahoney. Please come forward. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Photo might be over here.
Just a second.
Thank you.
And the next recognition will be in Worcester at Port College.
I think we're doing assumption this year.
Assumption. We think it's assumption. Well, will it change? Will it change?
But congratulations guys, obviously a huge achievement. Currently our paledictorian and salutatorian respectively. The race is still on, a few quarters left here, trimesters left, but outstanding work. Congrats.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, student representatives.
Good evening all. I have a few updates for you guys. So first, we had our staff appreciation breakfast this morning. We brought in muffins and other pastries from Muffin House and our Eboard came in and set it all up for them. We also have Hyannis coming up, our trip to Hyannis. We're going to bring sixteen students, twelve girls and four boys, and they're going to be notified tomorrow about that, who's going. And then, I'm also going to be running for the state board vice president.
Oh, good. Campaign commences.
I'm excited. And then, my last update for you guys is our holiday drive. We went shopping last Saturday. We spent about twenty-four hundred dollars for twenty families, around sixty-seven people total, and we wrapped for about, we came back to BBT and we wrapped for about four hours. And then, overall, for the holiday drive in general, we raised over three thousand dollars, about twenty-eight hundred dollars from students and then two hundred dollars from parents. And for the chain tours, we had our top three shops. In first place was electrical, second was engineering, and last place was dental. Also, I have one more update because I think it's kind of cool. We got our quarter zip, our Eboard, I think they're just pretty cool. Ms. P. didn't write that one down. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Very impressive fundraising, okay, the competitions by the shops and the efforts by the students to reach out and donations by staff to students as well, okay? But great, great work.
Thank you so much. Have a great night guys.
Thank you, you too. Next item on the agenda, vocational directors' report.
Tom can't join us tonight, his son had a minor surgery. I just hit this button.
You should work as long as you like. It looks like it does, don't be worried with us. We should be.
I do think last minute.
Matt, do you have the hands? Hi, you're right.
Sorry to get over here.
Right.
I can say no hate jokes.
I think sometimes if they shut the switch.
Let me just, yeah.
There we go, there we go.
See, it was, the short people to get it. Sorry, Matt.
So I'll start it off, get about halfway through and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Hathaway.
Yeah, we're just coming up. It's cold.
You can do it. I can go to the next one.
Like new administrators, it takes a while for them to shine.
Right.
So I'll start off with some program refinements and review the freshman shop placement and then Ms. Hathaway will take us through some district projects and the co-op update and then we'll move on. So, the first program refinement slash enhancement, I suppose, would be the addition of the advanced manufacturing moonlight program. We had three open house sessions in November, very, very well attended, over fifty attendees, a lot of employers, a lot of comments made about hiring people that have completed the program. So, there's a good partnership brewing here. The spring session that starts in January, January eighth is full at capacity with twenty students enrolled. I've turned away four already. So, we will have additional information sessions in the spring, in the February, March timeframe. The idea there would be to have them come in and view the students in action to get a better feel for what might be happening at the, at the night school and then run another program next fall. It's a five hundred and eighty-five dollar tuition and the students will leave the program with a MackWick Level One certification. MackWick is a central mass partner, I suppose, that's partnered with QuinSigum and Community College. There's five levels, I believe, some graduate or some coursework is involved at QuinSig. But our goal is MackWick Level One. In the fall, we may look to add a Level Two certification for the graduates of the spring program and then for anybody else that wanted to enroll. Yeah, I guess we can move on from that one. There's been tremendous turnover in the business program. We have two new instructors up there. Earlier on this year, we had an open house where we invited all of the parents for all four classes to come in and review program enhancements and see the new vision that the two new instructors have for the program. They're going to be focusing on these areas. They have a wonderful presentation. I have a hard copy of it over here, but if anybody's interested in seeing it, I'd be more than happy to send it to you via email and you can review what they're going to be working on up in business. Our robotics team is off to fantastic start to the year. I believe there's been three tournaments so far for VEX. We have different types of robotics that the students can get involved in. We've received, or the students have received, three excellence awards. I believe they've won the excellence award at each of the tournaments they've entered. They've won two of the three tournaments and then were defeated in the finals in the other, in the other tournament. We did host a first Lego League or FLL tournament here at BBT and that's for the middle school kids. That was earlier in November. And then, some of our, the students on the robotics team have been going out to area towns and doing some mentoring with some of the middle school kids as well. First robotics kicks off in January, that's the one where they unveil the game or challenge for the year and the students have six weeks to build the robot to compete. And those are larger one hundred and twenty-five pound robots as compared to the smaller VEX robots which are, I don't know that there's a weight limit, but they're dimensionally regulated. And then, I believe the Electra-Thon America students, they're doing a brand-new car build, they're branding, building a new chassis from scratch. So, in the past, we received a kit, put it together and raced it, now they're starting with a cab, cab plans, taking it over to manufacturing, cutting the materials and building a frame from scratch. So that's exciting. Okay, next.
Matt?
And then, yes?
Excuse me, I didn't want to interrupt you, but you had said there would be an opportunity for you on the previous slide that you would be able to send someone what the finance and all those programs were, some of the outlines of those?
Yes.
I'd like to see it.
Sure, yeah, I have a hard copy here, but I can certainly email you.
It's fine. I'll even take your eye call.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If anybody else would like that, you can just let me know. Another program that was run recently was the ACE Mentor Program. Mr. Belland headed up this program in partnership. It's with, it was with Consigley Construction, but this program is focused on exposing students to engineering, architecture, construction project management, that sort of thing. I think they did it for seven or eight weeks here in the cafeteria annex.
In the evening, in one Saturday.
Yep, in one Saturday class and it was very well attended. I believe we had over thirty students participate in this, so this is another fantastic outreach piece. Okay, next. Class of 2022, eighty-eight percent, thereabouts, eighty-eight percent received their first choice program, which is fantastic. Another seven percent got their second or third choice and then, well, you'll see one, 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 one percent, but it's one and change to add up to the remaining five percent that received fourth through, through seventh. So that's the breakdown for the year. I think eighty-eight percent is a fantastic number.
Matt, for the benefit of the school committee, was the choice of the students made on the basis of prior entry or after they finished exploration?
Great, next slide. Yep. So, the different colors here, the yellow color would be their choice on their application coming to BBT. The orange color would be after they've completed seven exploratories, what they chose, and then shop placement, and of course, this is limited to, limited by seats. So if you see, you know, plumbing, for example, very, a lot of students interested in a very successful exploratory this year, only a certain number of seats. So, this number of students would bump to their second, their third, et cetera. So you'll see some trends there. Perennially health does well, right? Engineering does well, multimedia communications does very well. Okay. Can leave this one up for a little bit for.
My question's like, are you able to track, you know, it's like, I mean, the Saudis got raw data.
Correct.
But, you know, there's nothing to say that the twelve people that selected data, their selected dental, their application are going to all say it at the end of exploratory, you could add six and say, no, I want to do something else.
Correct, correct, yeah. That is not encapsulated in this particular slide. We could go back and look at all of that.
And, yeah.
Usually, it's about fifty percent, I think, is what we've historically seen, yeah.
But, we have, we don't have the data for that right now, but we, that is something we certainly look at, analyze how many chose, like if they wanted, like for instance, if we look at plumbing, who had a large number of students after exploratory picking them? They came in, only eight students wanting them, so we're not sure how many of those actual eight students, those eight John Does or Jane Does wanted it coming and picked it. We don't have the data in front of us, but that's something we certainly can digest down and look at.
Yeah, no, it's because, I mean, I was like using the plumbing as an example, it's like you could have had those eight go, no, I don't want to.
Correct.
But they wild twenty-four brand-new students with no idea walking in.
That could very well be the case. Very well be the case, yeah. Across the board.
Yeah.
Right, there's a lot of shop.
Do we have a, can we get a copy of that?
Of this?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, I appreciate it. That's, I think, pretty interesting, especially the eighty-eight percent is outstanding, so it's a nice thing to be able to demonstrate to people potentially that would like to come.
Yeah, there's an overwhelming number of programs that filled up right on the number this year.
Really?
Yeah. If there were sixteen seats, there were sixteen first choices. If there were eighteen seats, there were eighteen HVAC, I believe. It happened a couple times, so. Here, 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 or if not right on the number, very close.
Yeah, just like the auto tech.
Within one or two.
Dental.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, Jerry, did you want this slide as well, that data as well as this one?
Yeah, I, any, when I get asked specific questions, I like to have specific answers because you get someone who says, geez, my Johnny and Mary didn't get into that one since, you know, we had eighty-eight percent.
Yeah.
I'm sorry that you didn't, or he didn't, but indeed, we do have, would I be a very admirable placement for first, first choice. I'd like to let them know.
I think what's also important to recognize here and what we realize is the more students that get their number one choice means that it looks good for those students, for those students that might have chosen a shop as their second choice, get bumped up. So for example, if I was a student that was interested in health services, dental and multimedia communications, if I chose them as my first, second, and third choice, we run into the situation where like, if I got just a lower score in, in health services and I didn't get in, so I got bumped to my first choice and also dental filled up on its first choicers and possibly my third choice filled up on its first choices, so I could possibly get bumped. So those are things, you know, certainly that some students might have experienced.
Yep.
So, the more students we get getting their first choice, first choice shop, it kind of like trickles down that there's no room in those other shops.
Correct.
So, it's a great thing for sure that we're filling up with first, like first choicers at the high rate that we are. It means that the students are happy where they are, so. And those students that maybe didn't get their top three, because I think there's a couple of them from the previous slide that we showed you, we are offering them extended exploratory as well. So, if they've indicated that they're interested in exploring other shops, maybe that they didn't get a chance to in the first seven.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I believe there's seven shops right now with a few seats open, so if these students would like to go re-explore those, they're more than welcome to. Of course, we want everybody to be happy and find a home, right?
Obviously, this is key information. I would say that if I recall the presentation of a year ago, the answer was fifty-one percent of the students changed their mind from the program, based on limited career information, okay, versus the experience of seven exploratories that gave them a pretty good dose of reality relative to seven different occupational pathways and they changed their mind. We've also discovered, the empathy and others, members of the team, will occasionally alert me that a parent has complained, but the parent wasn't aware that the student changed their choice. So maybe then, maybe you have to encourage more home conversation.
Sure.
But, so, to have students make selections after experiencing the seven exploratories creates an informed, you know, trainee and a greater alignment of consistency and cohesion that results in less frustration, less disappointment. And so, and it's great for you to have a fairly good balance of that. If you looked at, as you looked at the high yellow buys or gold buys, those were the first choice, those are the choices before.
Application choice, yeah.
And when you see significant change, you can see that these fifty-one percent, I guess, of these kinds of change of decisions after they had the seven exploratories.
Right. We see it in particular in engineering. It's almost like we trick middle schoolers into engineering is duct tape and popsicle sticks and then, oh geez, it's, there's a lot of math, there's a lot of, you know, high-powered thinking in this, a lot of people, eh, maybe that's not what I want to do or.
It's different than I thought.
It's different than I thought, yeah. It's different than I thought it was going to be. We see that in several cases.
It's not a bad thing, it was just a.
Right.
In fact, it's actually a good thing.
It's actually a good thing, you're exposing each of these. I'll turn it over to Ms. Hathaway at this point.
Okay. So for district projects this year, we have had two hundred and seventy-seven requests come in. We were able to actual create work orders and services for those, for two hundred and sixty-eight of those. The remainder of the balance of them will be ones that perhaps that jobs didn't fit into our curriculum at the time. For example, in auto collision, we're constantly having individuals bring us in car, like saying, we'd like you to work on our car. It's nineteen sixty-seven, rusted out such and such of automobile and it just doesn't quite fit into our curriculum. So we, because, we'll get to that in a minute, but we, so we don't always take every request because we physically cannot for space-wise, but we were able to invoice out two hundred and twenty-seven of the two hundred and sixty-eight. We have a number of projects still in the queue that we're completing and working on that is bigger, larger projects for certain of our, some of our programs. Here is our alternatives carriage house. We've been showing this to you for the past several years. We're happy to say that the outside has been completely, or is completely finished now. The next step is to work on, this is the new area that we built and we redesigned the whole entire building. So the next step is to work on the interior part of the building, which has come up conveniently in the middle of the winter, which is great. We're also looking at what I believe the alternatives has got, received a grant to have some more work done on the exterior of this area right here, which is hoping to send masonry work out there and go up and that we can assist with that as well. So the carriage house is still a project that we're working on and it's moving along nicely. In health services, last week, we had our sophomores go out to Milford and they were able to teach a lesson on infection control and hand washing at again, a very convenient time where it's cold and flu season. So they went out and the students actually developed the lessons on how they were going to deliver this information to these elementary school students. And the kids were super excited, the elementary school kids from Milford were super excited and our students were excited as well. And here you can see that they have backpacks in front of them. While they were there, they also had collected items to give to certain students that were in need in this particular class for the holidays, they did backpacks to have all kinds of school type of materials for the classrooms. That was exciting as well. So this was a really great lesson for our health services sophomores going out. Here you see a painting design technology has worked hard this year to, throughout the building, as you can see, and here in particular, as well as our super in print those conference room and our BRC attendance office. We're doing a lot of this new window treatments, which is almost like a frosted glass look. And if you look, which you probably can't see right now because it's dark outside, but they've just done here on Three Seasons as well, the Three Seasons logo on the windows. So we're seeing this throughout the building more and more and this is becoming something that, a new skill that the students have learned and they're taking to the next level. So we're excited about this. Here in, I totally get back to auto collision and here's a perfect example of why we're not taking in the older cars and fixing up the old rusty cars and doing complete remodels. We're focusing on the collision repair because that's where the market is. Day in, day out, individuals, including myself, you know, getting a little fender benders and our students are working on immediate, you know, dent repairs. Here you can see they're using our frame lift impulser, so they're actually adjusting the car. So this was a great collision, not a great collision, but a great example for our students working on a true collision where they were able to utilize our frame machine and get a true experience from beginning to end of adjusting the entire car. Next, please. Co-op education. We have seventy-four students on co-op and this is a average of where we are in December every year. We hover around the sixty to seventy or so mark, so we're at seventy-four students on co-op right now. We have a lot of repeat employers that are hiring our students year in and year out. We also have new individuals looking for, hiring our students, so it's exciting as well. We're constantly advertising on the jobs, we have companies that are constantly advertising with us on our job connection page. Our job connection page is a part of our website where anyone that owns a company can go on and put in who they're looking to hire, whether it's a summer position, part-time, full-time position. So our alumni, our graduates have access to this page and any of our students, which is really exciting. So they are, students are getting jobs off of the job connection page.
Good idea.
Yeah, thank you. Here we are, should break in down our co-op students out by industry. As you can tell, our two largest numbers are our construction, which has construction industry, which is, we've got a lot of plumbing, HVAC students and construction type students out right now, intellectual. In high-tech, we have sixteen students out, manufacturing, we have four because again, manufacturing is only welding and manufacturing, machining rather. In service, we have thirty-three students out, which is our highest because there's a huge need in the medical industry and dental industry for dental assistance and CMAs. Our out-of-district and in-district employers is hovering a thirty, so forty-one percent of our, is out-of-district and forty, fifty-nine percent is in-district. And that's typical of where we are. Years ago, we used to be hovering more of out-of-district and now we've started moving more the past two or three years into in-district, which is exciting for the valley areas. And next, I'd like to call forward Mr. Jim Floyd, who is our electronics chair and he serves as the vice chair for our general advisory committee. So come on up, please, Mr. Floyd, and he's going to give you the advisory committee report.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm a middle-aged guy, not a student, and I'm a writer, not a speaker, so I'll be wearing my glasses and you can consider this my cellphone, but don't be worried. Often I've joked the vice chairman is only needed if the chairman were incapacitated or assassinated, but tonight he's out doing charity work, so I'm obviously not as on-point or as funny as I think. But I'm proud to pinch it for Peter. He, like all the members of the board, your distinguished colleague, colleague Joe Broderick included, is extremely dedicated and truly committed to making BBT as great as it can be. I was told to be briefed at two, so I prepared my remarks in advance, so let's have at it. There we go. The general advisory committee has kept abreast of all major topics related to BBT. I won't go through this laundry list. Rather, I'd like to take this opportunity to say that the school's three vocational coordinators, two of you plus Tom Belland, are fantastic to work with. Everything is explained in detail, input is encouraged, and they make this relationship feel like a true partnership. There we go. There are currently four hundred and seventy-two general advisory committee members, three hundred of them, along with many of you, were able to attend the fall advisory dinner. More important, that day was filled with input and expertise so the shops can continue to stay abreast of the right training and techniques to prepare the workforce of tomorrow. All shops have great representation, but the door is always open for more. And we're happy to report that our fundraising effort means that one graduating senior from each and every shop will receive a craftsmanship award in the amount of one hundred dollars or roughly two point four percent of a bitcoin, based on today's valuation. I'm told there'll be no questions, but I'll ask anyway. Are there any questions? And Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. He is wishing you a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure. I just want to publicly acknowledge Mr. Floyd's work and contribution here. He is the father of three sons who attended Valley Tech. You can't make a greater commemoration than that, so thank you very much.
And like, after every general advisory report, we have our membership forum who'd like to present to the chair, Mr. Hall, and would like me to sign him, please, one copy for you and one copy for us if you will.
We have to take the vote.
We need to vote to accept. Make the motion.
Motion made and second to accept the general advisory committee membership report. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, the membership report is approved. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions before we turn the floor over?
Again.
Any questions for Matt and Matt?
Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda, facilities. John?
Yes, okay. Tuesday night, the facility subcommittee met at four forty-five and we went through quite a busy agenda. Now, Mr. Warren gave us an update on the.
We have to take the vote. We need to vote to accept.
Make the motion.
Motion made and second to accept the general advisory committee membership report. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. The membership report is approved. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions before we turn the floor over? Are there any questions for Matt and Anthony?
Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda, facilities. John?
Yes, okay. Tuesday night, the facilities subcommittee met at four forty-five. And we went through quite a busy agenda. Now, Mr. Moran gave us an update on, so we got PM'd on a, yeah, eleven twenty-eight. We had the rent, we stumped the boiler, exhaust vents cleaned in the culinary on twelve fourteen. Generator, a few members done, twelve seventeen. The old elevator, I guess, had some worn-out guide shoes. Had to replace them. And in part of the, my report, this, last time we talked about donation of all the furniture and the items that were donated to the school, Doc had given, Mr. Moran a lead on. And one of them was a fork truck. And what I gathered, they had just, the only thing we had to do to replace the fork truck was blow off a tire and replace an alternator. And they said it's, it works great. So it replaces our old fork truck. It's been here probably since the school was built. You know, so we're all happy to get a new and upgraded fork truck donated for nothing. That's a great find just there.
We actually, we actually have both of them running perfectly.
Do you?
Which is very appreciated.
Yes. And we talked about, the committee talked about, you know, with fork trucks, you've got to have training. You know, once a year, you know, well, seventy-three years I think it is now. Yet you have to certify people to drive the fork truck. And the committee was talking about, with Mr. Moran, is how do you know who's certified, who's not? Things are sitting there. Someone gets on it and drives it. So we talked about coming up with a nameplate to put on the fork truck. Once the individuals are approved to drive it, their names are on it. So if somebody sees somebody going by, you can stop them if you know it's not that person and, you know, hold them accountable for getting on it because liability alone, if somebody gets on a fork truck that's not certified to drive it and something happens, God forbid. So, you know, we're in the process of coming up with that type of plan anyway, on that part. Okay, and then I guess the other thing is, okay, let's see. Twelve twenty-six, they're going to do grease traps, clean them out in the kitchen, culinary. They do that twice a year and do it when no one's there. And this year, we're talking about looking into another compressor. We have one compressor right now. It runs the whole school. And if, God forbid, it ever went down, especially with like, you know, manufacturing and automobiles and all that uses air. If something happens to the compressor, it goes down, the school's down until they get it repaired. So the shops have, can't do anything. So we're in the process of looking to have a backup compressor. So that we're going to be covered for that.
Excuse me, there's already space. It was already made for it when we did the construction. It was some, we were always going to do that, so there's a space for it. Quick, couple, little bit of plumbing to pump it in. Electrical service and we're up and running.
Yeah, so it'll just be like, you know, this one will run at, say, you know, a hundred PSI, this will run at eighty. This drops down, this will kick on and, you know, keep it going. And if something happens to this one where it's got to be serviced, we take it offline, this one's still going to cover the school. So that's, you know, we're looking into that right now.
We'll present that in the January budget meeting as well for capital. So that's made the list.
Yes. And then twelve twenty-eight, they're going to do the black backflow inspections throughout the school. And, which was one more thing, what was it? So much we went over. Oh, and we also took a tour. And the tour this time was in the kitchen. I don't know if anybody's looked in the kitchen, but for years, they've been talking about getting it done and we're finally going to go forward with it. At the bottom of the floor, you can see where the tile comes down. When they built the school, the tile came down and it was like a cold, the bottom occurred. Well, they're all cracked and of course, it's culinary, you want everything to be clean. So starting next week, they're going to be going, it's going to be painstaking, but they're going to chip out all the bottom tiles and replace them all. So it's going to take a while. You know, Anthony, you want to elaborate on that if you want?
Ted, Moran thought it was a couple hours' job. I thought Mr. Festa would have that on the day.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Festa wrote him down and showed him that that would be at least a week's worth of work.
Yeah.
They planned it over the break and should be able to complete most of it and all of it. A couple fellas, not just Mr. Festa alone. But they're all set up and ready to go. As soon as kids leave tomorrow, I'll get a jump on it.
Ted, you assumed that he'd have a double shot of espresso before he did it.
Yeah, really. And the last thing is, we're in the process of coming up with a preventive maintenance manual for everything in this school. So they will have dates, times, people signing off when things are done. So we don't lose track of, you know, everything needs to be, you know, taken care of in the time, you know, mash, you know, fan and, yeah. So, any questions?
Last committee meeting, I think we were talking about some work that was being done on the trucks, the snowplows and all that. Is that all done?
Okay. Anthony, would you like to take over now, please?
Sure.
About the trucks, because, you know, we're talking about...
Just to quantify them, one of the trucks that we recently purchased was a Ford F-350 duly with a rack body. That truck has been completely serviced, up and running. The sander is mounted on it now. It has a nine-foot plow on it. It's storm-ready. I think our investment in that truck is about forty-five hundred dollars. And it's turnkey and good to go. We acquired, actually one of the things that Curtis is about to present here is a donation of a Ford pickup truck. And we actually received it for free. We were interested in it because it had a very nice clean body on it. And we were going to take the cab off it and eventually replace the one on the previous truck, the duly I just told you about. And realized that it was actually much nicer than our pickup truck. It didn't run and Autotech assessed it and figured out that it needed a fuel pump. You got to take the body off, take the fuel tank out. We did that. But basically, two-hundred-and-six-point-seventy dollars later, we have a perfectly running F-250, which had the plow frame but not the plow. So we estimate that for about two thousand dollars, we'll be able to pick up the Fisher plow that fits on it. And that's an additional truck we didn't anticipate. So we'll still be looking for a donor cab down the road to the other truck that's more for utilization at this point. So we will have that in addition to the fleet as well. So that gives us four plow trucks at this time. Actually, five if you include the Bronco.
We could plus four and a half.
Right. So, yeah, somebody asked, the new school class, we got, we're going to be putting a plow like that. But I think we, we're in good shape. All we need to add now is snow and I believe that's going to happen sooner or later.
And that truck that we had, that you just talked about with the fuel pump, that's only thirty thousand miles on it.
Oh, wow.
So, you know, that's even a better find. So it's not many miles in the program.
Can I just add one other question, mostly because I've been out of touch with this for a while. I remember back when we did the, we did the upgrade to the school a number of years back. One of the things we did on the furnace, we had like a dual-use. I think it was gas and oil.
That's right.
How, how is that system running and are we like flipping back and forth between whether we use gas or whether we use oil? I mean, I haven't heard about that in a while. It used to be a thing when we...
These... I think Curtis will verify that the gas is significantly cheaper than oil. We do, it's a twin cam system, so we do fire them on oil, but just for the sake of making sure that that component is working for the...
And that whole system's working, working well? We haven't heard about it.
Right.
Corrected. We do occasionally fire them on oil just to make sure that that mechanism is working properly. But we run them on gas, natural gas, ninety-nine percent of the time. And that's because it's a more cost-effective than the oil.
And everything's running well?
Oh, yes.
One thing that we are looking, this is the underground fuel, I mean, yeah, where the fuel...
The finance guy now.
We, we are definitely looking at eventually phasing that out and getting something above ground because it all can get stagnant in there. So it is functioning, but that took all of hours because of the age of the tank.
Yeah, and there's another one that Mr. Moran brought up in the future, he'd like to see possibly us putting a, possibly the back of the duly. You know how like construction trucks have a diesel fuel tank on the back? Because, just because we have vehicles, we do not take off the, you know, out on the street, you know, on the property. They have to sometimes run out and get, you know, gas cans of diesel fuel to put into the, into the vehicle. We'd like to get something where we could have on-site and have, either have it filled. And then during the middle of a snowstorm, they can just pull up and fill up instead of having somebody run down the road because the truck needs fuel. They try to have them fueled up during a storm, but like you said, if the storm is a continuous storm where you need to keep it filled up, it's just more of a pain. So that man hours is input on it and we're just going to, you know, review it and try to open our idea.
Just to clarify, the cab that I was talking about replacing is a crew cab. We wanted to replace it with a standard cab, which leaves ample room to put a large fuel tank. And Mr. Lavens referring to, I'm sure Mr. President knows all about it. There's fuel that has fuel tanks, then there is off-road or fuel. And still low sulfur fuel, but it's intended for equipment and machines that, vehicles that do not see road use. We would be able to spy at a cheaper rate with the ball of our equipment on campus here filled. What we get is deliveries of basically off-road fuel at a cheaper rate and much more convenience, less labor, et cetera, to fuel up onsite stuff.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to thank the facilities subcommittee. It's very helpful to have your additional eyes and reviews and recommendations. And I think the discussion about trucks and everything else showcases how we continue to try to maximize the tax dollar. Okay, using our own skills to cannibalize and modify and reconfigure. Anything from the snowplow truck and its attachments to anything else? Thank you.
Just one tip, Dr. Bo, from the facilities committee. You know, we also, as we walk along, we see things, you know, in the halls and here and there. And I want to give credit to all of them. They did a great job. You know, the place is looking really good, you know. The crew was, you know, you ask them something and they're right on it. So, you know, they did a great job.
Moving on. Curtis?
So I just wanted to give a quick report on the wellness fair. Annually, we do this in December. And it's another one of the district initiatives that we undertake to make sure that our employees are being introduced to healthy living habits, if you will. This year, we focused on applications to deal with technology. And so we called it an app for the day, highlighting the word app. And we did various workshops that tied back if it was cooking. They tied, and it's healthy cooking, they tied it back to an application that would aid in that process. We covered things like your digital health, protecting your identification because obviously stress around that, you know, event is not good for the body. We talked about healthy cooking, as I mentioned, personal wellness coaching. And they did that in fifteen-minute increments and met with various employees. We did one on sleeping smart and the importance of sleep to a healthy body. Our physical education department came in and did various applications related to fitness. And then of course, Dr. Patric, you actually had the opening session that was devoted to education around the new Harvard Pilgrim Best Buy HSA, which is a high deductible plan that is consumer-driven in terms of you making decisions around the cost of healthcare and how it impacts this health savings account that you have on the side. It's reduced premiums. This is something that the district has been trying to educate the employees on, to get them to understand the benefits of it and to ultimately lower the premiums associated with that and the district's cost, which is July one going to be seventy-five percent. We felt like it was, over the past, I'd say, two months, we've done a series of four to five different workshops. Had one in the evening for spouses. And we've gotten a lot of anecdotal feedback, if you will, that people are planning on switching over. I'd say we might be in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty in addition to what we have now, but we'll wait and see. I'm going to be joining. I was doing a great deal of education about myself on this product and, and came to see that it was something very valued and I've been trying to push that down to the other people. If they'll just open their eyes. So, anyway, it was a good day. Starts off with a healthy breakfast and we go from about seven fifteen to ten fifteen. We also have chair massages open to fifteen, ten-minute increments, I think, is what the employees sign up for. And it's just a way to devote back to the employee and show them how appreciated they are and just, you know, give them some healthy tips on how to live a better life, if you will. A healthier teacher is a better teacher in front of their student. If you have any questions on that, I'd be more happy to entertain an answer. No, hearing none. Oh, we don't have any line item transfers to present at this time, but we'll move right on to item eight-point-three A and B. So Anthony, I was about to ask you about one of these donations when I looked down and saw that we had an eight-point-three A and B that were exactly the same. So I, thank God I run, so I folded down to my office. And we did a quick correction. So we'll start with item eight-point-three A. This did come out in your packets and we did not have the benefit of a title at that time. And we were informed that this was a two thousand and two-four. I got the corrected information out in the revised eight-point-three A. It is actually a two thousand and three-four-two-fifty. And in this particular case, it's coming from Harbor Management. Because it's part of their fleet, we do not assign any sort of a tax value. They will remove that at the carrying cost from their books, okay, so they don't need anything. So we just needed to show them that we accepted it from their company.
I'll make the motion to accept it. My second by Mr. Lavens, second by Mr. Finn to accept this donation. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Donation accepted.
And now for the brighter colored item eight-point-three B. This is from Mr. Ludbitson. I think if I, I hope I didn't hack that up too bad. It's a two thousand and two Dodge Ram twenty-five hundred. And talked with Autotech about this and they assigned the value of that at four thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. They do that through Kelley Blue Book and an evaluation of the vehicle in relation to a range for low, medium, and high. This happened to be on the lower end of that range. So if we can get a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Burwood.
Second.
Second by Mr. Broderick. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The donation is accepted.
And that's it. Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Woo, woo!
And now we'll turn it over to Mr. Steele.
Thank you, Phil.
And we'd like to thank Mr. Sasso for being ahead of schedule, so we'll do it all right back up again.
Got the over to him?
Yeah, we called that extra time.
Twenty minutes just talking about Fox.
Now, this is where it's going to go.
Oh, have some confidence here.
Have a cookie.
Since the chairman left, I'll pass out some stuff.
Have a cookie.
He usually give you a couple of examples for your...
That's great. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Nine-point-one, a vote career and curriculum night update. Obviously, you saw the outcome of exploratory and the placement process. I believe it was actually the same night as our last meeting. We were hosting this event, if you recall. So just give you a brief update of how the night went. Again, we had the parents come in right, that was during exploratory six out of seven. We surveyed the students at that point in time. These are the freshmen of their shop choices. Gave the parents information on the top four of their students' choices and they had an opportunity to circulate, ask them more questions about that particular shop or that career pathway, understand placement opportunities, job opportunities, expected salary and wages, and all of that type of information so that they could go home and assist their son and daughter with that final shop choice. So, you know, that was some of the work that goes on behind the data that you saw tonight. It was very well attended. I think all but about a dozen or so of the parents that came, and I said, parents of the students. We know that because we hand out schedules of the students' choices to the parents as they come in. That's, we've only been doing this, what, three years now? This is the third. And that's the highest participation rate we've seen so far. Also, had an opportunity to meet with our school council, which is comprised of parents, many of them freshman parents, to also get their feedback in the type of information they got. We've been tweaking and tailoring the presentations in the eighteen career technical area. We've been tweaking and tailoring the presentations in the eighteen career technical areas to reflect what we think is important to the parents. And once again, had another opportunity, another iteration of feedback and we will go on to continually refine this. One of the philosophical questions is they say, geez, you know, we have about fifteen minutes in four shops. We'd rather just see maybe two, give us the top two. The other side of that is that, understanding all of those choices, we intentionally want them to see some of the shops that they maybe weren't taking a look at or didn't quite understand for exactly that purpose, to make sure that they realize the opportunities that exist even in what at that point they perceive as choice three or four. So we'll keep, we'll take that feedback, we'll continue to refine the event, refine the actual presentations within each shop. And hopefully it drives better and better placement data on the other end. You know, one thing that I will say or comment on in the earlier presentation is that I, I'm quite sure that the eighty-eight percent first choice is, is the high watermark for us. That's the highest it's ever been. What was unanticipated in that and alluded to in many of the comments is that it's also the highest number of students that we ever had. I think there were nine of them represented there that were in choices four through seven, right? So on one hand, you say, okay, there's three hundred and fifteen kids and nine of them didn't get their top three choices. But trust me when I tell you that's nine very unhappy kids and their parents, right? And we try to remedy that the best that we can, come up with a solution. We're usually looking at a number half that, right? The other phenomenon that I see is that when you, we've kind of reflected on this, when you brag that you have eighty-eight percent of the kids that got their first choice, the, the perception of that, I think, of the, the parents and the students is, oh, the, the odds are great that I'm gonna get my first choice. And so if you are one of those nine, it's a, you know, how could this happen to me? And, and trust me when I tell you, those nine kids are no slouches. Their grades are great, they put in a good effort, there's nothing wrong with them per se. They probably chose shops that were very popular, heavily prescribed and so forth. And so there's a real shock and awe factor when you have to tell them they didn't get their top three or four or five. It, it's tough to grapple with. Yes, sir?
Well, I was just thinking I should have brought it up when Matt and Sarah were here, but. So it's like, we circle back to these kids, not just during the freshman year, are you guys happy? But maybe you can go back at their junior year, I hit the entire class. You know, yeah, you were one, you got your first choice. Are you still happy with that choice two and a half years later?
We're still, we sample often, so we'll have them explore, we'll have them look at the shops that are open. We really dig in and revisit what their career aspirations are and things like that. So for example, some of them may say, yeah, I wanted to be an engineer. They weren't looking at manufacturing as a, as an avenue towards engineering, you know, things like that. So we still try to help them in that sense. We'll check back in sophomore year, we do have a sophomore re-explore for students that have gone through freshman year and want to reconsider. So we really never give up. By the time you get to junior year, switching shops is problematic because you're a thousand hours in at that point.
No, I'm not talking about trying to catch, you know, to get them back in place, but it's almost like to look at them junior year ago. Because these are gonna be the kids, the ones I'm thinking of are the ones that aren't gonna make waves, aren't gonna come up and say, they had a bad choice, I want to reconsider. But go up and ask them, like, are you still happy with the choice? And you know, some of them. Yeah, I'm willing to say, no, I'm not, I'll stick it out, that's not a problem, but I'm not, you know, I wish I'd done something else.
And, and all of those efforts ultimately drive that better placement on the other end. So when they're graduating and we track where they're going, what they're doing. Are they continuing education in their career field? Are they actually entering into the career? That's all important work to keep that number healthy, right? Yes, sir?
Just a thought, you've made a point of describing the multiple paths that are available in any path. That the auto tech student can end up in the part side or, you know, or the sales side or, or, you know, billing side.
With one going into automotive engineering, at least one that I'm aware of at the moment.
So the ability to accommodate someone is greater because you're not locked into a dictionary of occupational title classification, only that. Right? And the teachers are tradespeople and the counselors are working, so there's some spinoff diversifications. So it's not a pigeonhole in kind of activity like it might have been in, you know, assembly line days. It's just a, a ray of directions, somebody could take in any path. It reduces any frustration.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Accommodation.
Anyhow, we'll continue to do the vote career curriculum night because we find that it overall has added to better placements and better outcomes, right? So any questions on nine point one?
Just one quick one, just my edification, it seemed like it was tremendous amount of people there that night.
Yeah.
I think I parked down the football field somewhere. Just out of curiosity, what, did you ever count how many people actually showed up?
So I think, Jerry, you're talking about nine point three, which is parent applicant night.
Right, right, right.
I'll get to that one in a, in a moment if you don't mind. In between is nine point two, which is our fall sports awards. I did send you the annual program that, oh, actually, this is the annual for the fall. So it, within it, not only do you have our coaching staff, but you also have how they finish for the season. We had all of our teams in, qualify for postseason play. And at the printing of this, you don't see football in here because as you know, we go, we play football in December. Right? So for your convenience, I won't, I won't read through it, I know you can read. But you'll see that we were, took home several championships, district and division championships. Girls soccer had a great year, cheerleading had a great year. But virtually all of our teams were in, qualified for postseason play. Yes, yes, sir?
Have you been invited to the whiteout yet?
Not yet, I'm waiting for the call.
Just was curious.
I could check my messages now, but I'm on.
Yeah, but there's a shutdown, so you can't.
Yes, sir.
We have been invited to the statehouse. Oh, cool, okay.
Yes.
We're in the works of fifteen point and a day.
Yes.
And while there are a number of students that were recognized, I assure you that Zoe Mahoney is recognized for dance that happens at University of Manhattan to play field hockey.
Yes.
And that's in the good, for the good of the committee, you'll see the addition. The young lady who presented this earlier this evening. Yep.
Yes, the valedictorian of the class was also signed.
Well, that hasn't been totally decided yet, you still got some time.
On to football. In case you didn't notice, we won the state championship. So it was our fourth time going into a Super Bowl and our third time winning. So we add two thousand eighteen, it was seven, two thousand seven, two thousand twelve, and then two thousand eighteen. And we will be having an award ceremony specifically for football, it'll actually be a ring ceremony at this point. The team captains did meet with our good friends at Balfour, the Johnsons, and picked out some designs, they're working on them now. And did their sizing and we'll have a dinner, typically a dinner and award ceremony specifically for football forthcoming.
Do we anticipate an ability to offer wing access to school members?
Absolutely, absolutely, we just need to measure your, your digits.
What process do you recommend to do?
Uh, what we should do at this point, if, all right, there's two ways we could go about this. If you want to stop by a jewelry store and just size your, your finger, unless you know what it is. But get that information to Michelle Denise, she can go ahead and just put the order in. There's a designation on the side, for example, an AS dash P for Assistant Superintendent Principal. I would imagine logically would be SC for School Committee. But we could take care of the rest if we simply know your ring size and if you want one. Right now, it's estimated that they would be two hundred dollars. The Johnsons, Balfour's, and also our fundraising effort will ultimately determine what the price or range is, but that's what we're thinking right now. And obviously, parents and so forth, they're fundraising so that the students hopefully can fundraise enough to cover the cost of their rings. Balfour is, the Johnson family typically gives us those at cost. So they will, they will give us those, you know, bare bones cost to produce. Sometimes they even throw in a little, so it's under cost. Match that with as much fundraising as possible. We've always ensured and made sure that every student athlete could get one. But we've also found that it, it's helpful to open it up for staff who wish to purchase one. It ultimately helps us keep the cost down for the kids. And you look good.
Does a student athlete play that sport?
Uh, yes, yes, good point. If that wasn't obvious, we're talking about, you know, football players. To Doc's other comment, Senator Michael Moore reached out to us and did inquire if we could come to the State House to be with the team, to be recognized. So that is something, working out the details of when we can do that, but obviously quite an honor for them. Yes, sir?
Is our trophy case kit too small, we have to go along?
Actually, we're working on that. The one that matches the trophy case that we have now outside the comp center. If you look at that hallway, there is another space right down there to build an identical one. Mr. Savard in the construction technology shop was, accomplished with his finished carpentry and has been taking a look at that, perhaps having some drawings done by our drafting students and so forth. That one that's there, we actually, we did not build that one. That one was contracted service and was not inexpensive, I'll say that. But we think the next one that we'll be able to do it ourselves.
That'd be nice.
But yes, we could use that. Also, in the Liberty Mutual donation, I spied out of the corner of my eye, a nice little glass trophy case. You'll see that one is outside the cafeteria now. And we put it out to discussion, what should go in it. And it is essentially full of robotics trophies, which we have a lot of those growing and growing and growing. And so that has become a showcase for robotics right outside of the caf.
Nice.
Doc, can you just keep us, let us know when that date is, if you guys?
For the State House or for the dinner or the ring ceremony here?
Actually, both.
Sure, will do. Any other questions on sports? All right. Now, to Mr. Finn's question, a nine point three parent applicant night is the big open house when we swing all the doors open, open to the public to come in and prospective students, obviously, to come to Valley Tech, check it out. Academics are in other areas as well. They do get a lot of questions about our academic program offerings, but the main focus is the shops. That is what makes us different or unique. The only way, as I've said in the past, to really estimate how many people are here is to look at the parking lots. We do borrow space from the nitmuck, or should I say, we fill our lots and that's the overflow lot. And we run shuttle buses over there to pick folks up. Doesn't seem to matter if it's raining, snowing, what is falling out of the sky. They're gonna come in, in large numbers, always a healthy interest in the school. One thing that was personally interesting to me about this year, I have certainly had students here who said, you know, my mom or dad had you. I didn't make it more than three feet down the hallway. I was running into all of my old students here, so it's my twenty-second year and, and they all have these young teenagers in tow and, you know, they're, those are their little ones, so. I have apparently reached that age where most of my first couple of classes that I had in English here, their kids are on their way and coming. And that's pretty, pretty neat to see. Certainly, it's a vote of confidence that they bring their little ones to their alma mater and thinks very highly of their school. So another great night for us in terms of community engagement and ultimately looking at the next round of kids coming in and, and interest in Valley Tech.
Just shy of a couple thousand?
I would say probably closer to three thousand.
Okay.
It's a very fluid night because it, there's no start and end time to it. And so you always have, you know, a flux of people coming and going. I would say at any given time, there's probably two thousand people in the building. But understanding it runs, what, three hours and there's, you know, I would say a good, another thousand that have come and gone in that time.
Good thing we got the extra trucks.
Right? Yes, sir?
Do they all come through the same door or they just?
No.
No?
No, all the doors.
So I'm saying, if you give everybody a ticket and tell them it's a door prize, boy, everybody will stand in line, they'll be counting exactly how many came through.
We used to do something that was close to that genre. And we used to do like an informational session in the beginning where we would speak for ten, fifteen minutes and give them some basic information about how to apply, how to get in and those things. And what we found was it, it was a traffic jam, right? And it really bottled the thing up. And because of the high number of people, we weren't doing anybody any favors. And it became information you could get online anyway. So it became somewhat antiquated to do that and so we uncorked it, right? And let, opened all the doors and let them flow, so.
It's a lot of people.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not a stat, it's important, the fact that you know there's a ton of people.
Yeah, like I said, the status of the parking lot has been our best indicator, right? It's like going to the mall on Christmas Eve, not that you guys shop then too. But, but, you know, go ahead and try to get a space, that'll, that'll tell you how busy it is. Personally, I find Christmas to be very hectic, you know, all that Christmas Eve shopping.
There you go. All these school committee presentations at night.
Right, right. Okay. Any more questions on open house? All right, the sophomore ring ceremony and dance, I'm gonna send around a new item here, so take a look and pass it down. That is the new Blackstone Valley Tech class pin. And I'll explain what that's all about. The ring ceremony is, is nothing, that has been going on. You know, I honestly don't know how far back, but I could say possibly back to the beginning of the school, right? You're all familiar with the concept of a, of a class ring. Something that has been a significant event here that the sophomore ring dance is the first really major event for a class coming in. So freshman year is really about figuring out who you are as an individual, picking what career you want, what shop you're gonna be in, it's about finding and figuring out yourself. Sophomore year is where they really start to come together as a class for the first time and this is their first big event, the first Friday of December every year. What it really has signified for them is something very important at Valley Tech and that's their solidarity as a class. It's about taking pride in their class and in their school as a whole. It's a unification of sorts. And we've found that the rings have been very popular here at, at Valley Tech. Balfour is, this, this has been their number one school in terms of participation. In other words, the number of percentage of students who opt to elect to buy a ring. And that has not changed. What has changed is that number has declined now to about fifty percent of the class. We were at the high watermark, up around seventy, seventy-five percent of the class. Not worried about ring sales per se. What I'm worried about is student participation in that event because it's a whole lot more than a ring. It's really what begins the process of our students coming together, doing things together as a whole, identifying themselves as a class. And ultimately, I told you, the place runs on pride and passion. And that one event is a very significant step in generating said pride and passion. And so what's happening is that the rings are seem, seem to be kind of falling out of favor with, with kids today. They're, they're, I don't know how it's. They're, they're, I don't know how else to phrase it. They're old, that, rings are old school. They're much more into phones and gadgets and some even suggested dog tags and so forth. So, um, just watching this progressive trend. So we were down to about a hundred and forty rings out of three hundred and ten kids. And specifically, the participation, we had two hundred and eleven kids participate in the ceremony. And that's out of three hundred and ten. So say two thirds of the class participated. To get back the original intention, what we're really after, uh, Balfour's, the Johnson family has always donated a couple thousand dollars back to the class based on the sales that they made. Uh, that goes into the class fund. So what I asked the Johnsons to do this year, they've never done it anywhere else. I say, can you take the, the two thousand that you would have given us back and make a pin for everybody? So whether they got a ring or not, whether they're interested in a ring or not, I still need to achieve the cohesiveness. And I can't mandate that they come here on a Friday night, but I can get awfully close to that. And, and basically, it's, we put it out there, made the parents aware that we're pinning, we're pinning the sophomores. And so, you know, male or female, they come across and they get the little box with the pin in it, and there may, may or may not also be a ring in it. Uh, but basically, as you see on that, a pin there, that was designed, you know, obviously for us and has twenty twenty-one on it. Uh, and basically, each year, we will make a new one. And, um, you know, it's interesting, like the, the kids in previous years started to get more interested in the three sweatshirt if, if they bought the ring than the ring. But the sweatshirt's gonna have holes in it and, you know, you'd be cleaning your car tires, your tire wheels with it in a couple of years. The whole point of the ring was, you know, it, it lasts and it, I'm afraid that down the road, it's gonna be something that they wish they had, right? It's like you, you appreciate it later, when it's too late to get one. The pin at least, uh, gives them that signal, that signifies that they belong to the class and the school and will last a bit longer than a sweatshirt. We may or may not see the numbers come back up in, in the interest in the rings. Right now, even though our numbers have dropped significantly, we're still Balfour's biggest customer on a percentage basis. So I've always looked at it as, um, it is, it's a valid measure, like the parking lot on, on parent night. That participation in that ceremony is a very good indicator of how much schooling class pride a given class is gonna have down the road. If they have a good, strong ring dance, they typically have a good, strong prom. That's everything, the fundraising, the, the planning for it and everything else. They have a good prom, they usually have a good senior class trip. And you see, you know, a very cohesive class. Remember, a couple of years ago, the kids did that video home and they were talking about, you know, Valley Tech and what Valley Tech meant to them. It all goes back to this sophomore year and really encouraging them and showing them how to come together and do something together and the significance of that and the value of that. And that's what ultimately runs this school, runs your school, is that sense of pride and passion in being a Beaver and being in the class of twenty twenty-one or whatever class it may be. That's why you bring your kid back here twenty-two years later and want them to be a Beaver. And it's important. So this is a new strategy. It may or may not work, but I can tell you, every kid is invited and will participate and will have something, right? Yes, sir.
Anthony, have you tried like doing like a video of the senior classes that have already gone through this and presented it to sophomore class? And, you know, because one student talking to another student is better than an adult talking to a student. You know, they say, oh, you'll regret not doing it and, you know, just to promote it a little bit from, from there.
And we're doing things like that. So we did, short of a video, we had some of the upperclassmen come back and speak to the sophomores about, you know, the ring dance and what it was all about and, you know, uh, not to miss that opportunity. We also found that it's interesting, um, I'll say in a, in a very broad sense, the kids are getting a little bit more introverted with, particularly with their technology, right? They'd rather communicate this way than go to a social function. And they don't wanna get up on stage and they don't wanna get, you know, highlighted and like that because it's uncomfortable. And I said, that's the whole point. I want them to be uncomfortable. They need to get good at that. They need to be, you know, you don't, you don't get good at it unless you experience it. And so we're trying to encourage them ways of going through and, and experiencing this because if you just simply left it up to them, they're probably gonna say, nah, I'll stay home and play Xbox tonight and I'll talk to my friends online, right? And you can text me later and tell me how the dance was, uh, that kind of thing. So the other thing we found was that kids don't tell their parents about it. And when their parents find out that there was a ceremony and they were getting pinned, um, they, they, what do you mean you didn't go? Right? So we've gotten quite a bit of traction from putting it out on our Facebook page and the classes have their own Twitter pages and things like that. And once the parents realize that this is what's going on, they will bring their kids over here and they wanna see them on stage in a, you know, ceremony like that. So reaching out to parents has been another huge thing. Uh, Ms. Rosansky just did a survey with the sophomore class to ask all kinds of questions about this and get the student feedback on the experience. So we're, like everything else, we continue to try to make it, you know, a little better, a little better.
Cool.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, is there a thermostat in here that could be turned up about twenty degrees?
No, we ran out of oil. It's called the code.
I'm sure they, I'm sure they're it, but we said no.
At first, it's PM.
Put your coat on.
Where is the thermostat in here?
Uh, right there.
Behind the lockbox that he has access to?
Well, you gotta hit it, see, like that.
It, it's a range. From bottom to top, I think is three degrees, right? So it might go from sixty-five to sixty-eight.
Fifty-five.
Yeah. Well, I think Karen just cut the wires. She said, you know, that's enough.
He's trying to cut costs. He's already shut the building down for vacation.
He needs to turn on the lights.
All right. Uh, if there are no more questions on that, I'll move into the two out of state trips. We have a Model UN trip, uh, nine point five A. Then we have a ski and snowboard trip.
I'll entertain the motion on the first one.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Lavin, Mr. Burle, just a hair too late.
Second.
Second.
Hurry up before I get the second.
Okay, no.
Let's do this. That is the Lavin for the. No, no, say the name of the issue.
Oh, Mr. uh, Mr. Lavin on the motion, Mr. Burle on the second.
When you said near miss, it was like, gee, box, I can edit it out.
He's too full, baby, he's too cold over there.
I apologize.
He's freezing the slow.
Uh, all right. So the motion is on the table to approve the out of state trip to Yale University for the Model UN. You know, Mr. O'Neil was here last month and discussed this during the social study. Questions, comments, discussion? Doc?
There's discussion. I noticed here, I think that the students are contributing a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
Once again, the students are ponying out, okay? Almost like an athletic group.
Yes, they're paying nearly half.
They will. That's the way we do things.
It is, all the time.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this trip, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, the out of state trip for.
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Burle with the motion, Mr. Lavin with the second.
I'll give you that one.
Questions, comments, discussion?
One comment, the students are paying for all of this one.
And Ms. Peterson still continues to lead the charge.
Correct, Mount Snow this year, Dover, Vermont.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Can I believe that?
That is it. And I just wanna say, for the record, they're putting me down to ten minutes is just a cruel joke. All right. No one could, no one could ever do that.
Eight next time.
This is done, it has to be done in you. Who's gonna give a report that good in ten minutes?
Well, we know what, we know what no matter what time we give you, you're gonna blow it by about ten minutes, so we keep it as short as possible.
Hey, who can you learn from?
Thank you, everybody, that's my time. See you next year. Very much. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays to everyone.
Yeah, have a good holiday.
Next up, Mr. Lavin on the budget report.
Yeah, I'll make it short, simple, fast, done though. Uh, if we did re-first round, see, we did this one thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, eight thousand series reviewed. And it really wasn't that bad at all. It really looked really good. They'd already made some decisions to what we're gonna fund, not fund. Still more to come.
Long way to go, yeah.
Long way to go.
Long way to go, looking good. Doc?
Uh, just a reminder, the next time we gather, let's invite Curtis and Lana to identify and, and obviously treasure, uh, cost-saving measures that have been built into the FY20 approach. That's kind of, I think, to kind of extract, if you will, um, meaning from the donated vehicles and several others that are suggested. Just if we were able to, there's some brainstorming there. We can see the purpose of that, I trust.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Okay, moving on, salary wages and fringe benefits. Took our first round. That? Doc, I mean, there's nearly nothing to spend in our first round, right?
We're building.
Yeah. We're building.
I would say we're ahead, uh, you know, of traditionally where we are at what the, you know, the new budgetary process.
Well, I'd say, yeah, I mean, buildings, well, that's a subtle way to put it because I know that Curtis is working hard with the department to make sure that only be.
Yeah.
Only, you know, to try and vet out what's truly urgent, truly needs to be done.
Well, yeah, when we. When we do ferret out the cost-saving measures, you're going to see things like our pursuit of additional grant monies, our pursuit of economic, you know, capital items from, from state and federal government, things like that, rather than going for our comments. We, we'll provide more specifics as soon as we're allowed to.
Great. Awesome. All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, superintendent director's report. Doctor Finn.
Chairman, remember the committee, item eleven point one. In anticipation of the tremendous impact that health insurance benefits have relative to budgets, we have been working closely with, with the two providers, Harvard Pilgrim and Fallon, on, in, I would say preliminary negotiations to secure the most advantageous rates possible. And we will continue to provide updates to the budget committee and to the board committee and our employees at large as relative to this. I have encouraged the committee previously to be optimistic about our ability to have a much more favorable position than a year ago. We did see a spike in our health benefit cost. And I think optimism is, is the direct way to go and we'll continue to keep you posted. Any questions on that? Harvard Pilgrim is the primary health provider. About a hundred and sixty-five total people within, within the plan. And I'm gonna say about a hundred and forty of them, Harvard Pilgrim, the balance being Any more questions, I'll move on.
All right.
Chairman, nothing. Eleven point two, in, in the, uh, pursuit of additional resources, we have an item, eleven point two A, uh, that indicates the Norfolk Federal Bank was funded up to provide a subsidy of three dollars, five hundred dollars, uh, which is what we use for the costs associated with the projects. And we saw the number of projects that went down in the earlier presentation by the local coordinators. And so we appreciate Norfolk Federal Bank's contribution. Any questions? Seeing none, moving on. Item eleven point two B. Again, a, a grant pursuit from one of our professional associations, uh, the New England School Developmental Council, uh, has been, come to fruition. We now have a commitment of seven thousand, two hundred dollars to run a second reenactment, in this case, uh, American Revolution War reenactment. And we would, again, like our members to be as active in this as possible. Exciting ways to build and expand our curriculum, provide vibrant learning for our students and subsidized by outside grants. Any questions? Seeing none, moving on. Eleven point three, we have in your communications, uh, a letter of the Times announced from veteran painting and decorating instructor George Quealy of Norfolk, Massachusetts. And he provides his advance notification at the conclusion of the fiscal year, uh, which will be timely. We appreciate that notification and wish him the very best, as noted in my note. Any questions? Seeing none, moving on. Eleven point three still. We have a message from our former communications specialist, Nicole, that she has given notice to leave. And actually, except for addition of staples, uh, supposed to her home and guess this additional financial rewards associated with that. She was a, a younger member of our staff and gained some significant experience following college activities and expressed her appreciation of multiple forms with personalized notes everyone, helping her grow with us and having a good experience. We wish her great best. Any questions? Seeing none, concludes eleven point three. Eleven point four, for the, in the preference of the negotiation subcommittee of the school committee, superintendent continues to provide progress reports, milestones relative to goals that have been identified earlier with the help of the school committee. They have delineated in the document, eleven point four, and it continues to be an activity in progress, if you will, as we want, uh, of this fiscal year. Any questions on that? Now, moving on, eleven point five, one of the many fundraisers that the school district has appropriated for a number of years has been the gourmet dinner. We would ask that the committee satisfy a bylaw of Upton authorized, I don't know if there are any documents on this. I, I haven't seen a document, we'll make sure we get that. But we would ask that you vote for support for the one day liquor license, likely to be served by staff members. I do not have the date in front of me, I apologize for that. Anthony was gonna get me the date, but I think he is, he's off duty now.
He's shopping.
He's shopping. So the gourmet dinner date could be, you know.
Detached.
I said, we do have to get it over to the administration so that they can.
It's a bylaw of the town of Upton.
Yeah, and do all, all of our signatures?
Yeah, we should sign it to date, right? It's in March anyway. Yes, that's correct.
So we'll try to get it to January.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to look up the, the date so that I have, for some reason, it's on my calendar.
So, uh, the question is, we're gonna get to take any vote on the event.
I'll make the motion when we have the event.
Yeah, well.
March twenty-first.
That's, I don't wanna say that, but that's.
At least that's what it says on the website.
Yeah, I think that's.
First day of spring. He handled the winter equinox or whatever.
Yes.
He handled winter, spring.
March twenty-first.
So I would, I would entertain the motion for us to sign.
Hey, I'll make that motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lavin, second by Mr. Finn to request a one day liquor license from the town of Upton, dated March twenty-first, for, to be served by staff on site, not the kids. Any other questions, comments, discussion?
I believe this year's theme is Greece, the country. No, not, 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 not the dance.
More the food.
That was French.
Back to the Greek.
Not ozo, but.
Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this request for a one day liquor license, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You'll notify us when that's ready so we try to come sign it. Thank you very much.
He's better off troll.
She's been notifying us, that's for sure.
What's it, what's wrong?
She's been notifying us, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
You only get it once, once a month. I get it every day.
It's like Mother Hennessy.
Very friendly one.
You're awesome.
I am.
All right. Next item on the agenda, any new business for the, bring forward for the school committee tonight? School committee members? Doctor, doctor, anything?
No.
I hope everybody happy holidays.
Items from the good of the committee are available. If you'd like to grab a copy and take one with you, or if you need extras, let. If you'd like to grab a copy and take one with you, or if you need extras, let, let Doc and Cheryl know, we'll get them to you. Next regularly scheduled school committee meeting, January seventeenth. And seeing as we have completed all the items on our agenda, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made as second, made by Mr. Broderick, second by, made by Mr. Broderick, second by Mr. Brosnan, a little too close for me. I was gonna say, and I give Mr. Brosnan credit because I thought there was no way we'd only be five minutes over.
And Mrs. Seal.
I know, yeah. And Anthony tried this last. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned, everyone have a great holiday.
All right, see you all next year, Merry Christmas.